Hello, Mr. Gottlieb.
Good afternoon, Chair.
Hey, how are you?
Very well, thanks. I'll try not to be long-winded.
Before I start, I want to comment that Andrew Gottlieb did a wonderful job of organizing the committee, of moving the agendas forward, of very nicely summarizing the actions or the information that the committees were trying to get ahead forward. And I believe that the fact that in this short period of time that we have this document in front of us is a tribute to all of his hard work and energy to do it.
Thank you, Bill. Let me run through with you what we've produced. And just by way of reminder, this committee was created at your call back in July, meeting the requirements of the ordinance that in its fourth year of existence, the collaborative be subject to review appointed by the group and the commissioners' call, as to look at the effectiveness of the collaborative and meeting the objectives that were laid out in the ordinance that created it. And also think about where we are as a region with wastewater water protection issues, and think about what the needs are for the next five years at a minimum, and to spend some time talking about whether or not the collaborative as currently constituted is appropriately suited to meet the needs of the next five years, and that we're not doing something that made sense five years ago and trying to apply that structure to a change landscape. And frankly, that's the interesting part of the discussion. It was relatively easy. Now, let me... So you appointed eight people to the committee. We met four times, which is what we had planned to do. And I will say, the committee members came and did their work. People brought a seriousness, an attitude to this, a commitment to looking at the issue honestly and fairly. There was, I think they'd say, no sort of collective group thing. I mean, people, yeah, people pushed on different places. People brought different perspectives to the table. And I think by and large, the product that you have today is reflective of a healthy conversation that resulted in a near-unanimous view that's reflected in the report. The easy part was looking back at the work the collaborative's done and coming up with a fairly consistent viewpoint that collaborative's two major areas of success were in providing enhanced access to funding to help Cape communities address their wastewater and water protection needs, primarily through sponsorship and assistance in passage, along with Paul's assistance on the Ulyra legislation that was incorporated in the government bond bill two years ago, or two summers ago. And that that provided an opportunity, an opportunity which has been largely underutilized, I might add, by our Cape communities, but an opportunity to access significant state dollars at no interest cost for the construction of water and wastewater facilities. And that, I think, people generally felt good about. And I think appropriately, people felt good about that. Secondly, I think people felt generally pretty good about the extent to which the collaborative has raised public awareness, both in terms of providing a forum for information sharing between member communities through the meetings, as well as a number of events, either public speaking opportunities where we've gone and visited communities, visited boards of selectmen, supported third-party nonprofit organizations in their efforts to provide enhanced understanding of the issues at play in a number, excuse me, a number of different communities. Various media outlets, the present preparation, distribution of 100,000 informational brochures on nutrient enrichment problem and its effect on water quality. And then the enhancement and maintenance through a collaborative agreement that we have with the commission of a website that provides good information, probably on the basic science and what's happening in the issue, but also the ability to reach into through one portal all the activities on an up-to-date basis that are happening in each one of the 15 member communities that comprise the collaborative. The thing about public access, public information, and money, you can never lower the costs enough, and you can never educate people enough. And so I think the general view was that those are things that have gone well and are going well and should continue to be things that the collaborative provides focus on. The area where and the criteria that were laid out, both in your directive to us to look at, as well as goals that were articulated in the original ordinance, revolved where the collaborative was felt to be somewhat lacking, revolve around the issue of regionalization and the extent to which the collaborative has provided an adequate and appropriate forum for towns to look to their neighbors to develop regionally-based solutions to water quality problems. And as important, whether the collaborative has its position in the right way to push that agenda on a more than informational basis. I think the findings of the group were that collaborative has done some good work, as recently as a couple of weeks ago, where we had presentations of the governing board on the cost savings that are documentable associated with regionalization. We used one of the shared watershed grants for funding. The commissions were generous enough to provide the collaborative to do a study in Orleans of the wastewater scenario in Orleans that looked at Orleans, Harwich, and Eastham on go-it-alone strategy, and what it would cost to meet the water quality improvement, and then what it would cost if they looked at regionalization, not only what the cost change would be, but what the changes in the areas required to be receiving infrastructure treatment. And very compelling data that showed it is cheaper for all three communities to work regionally than individually, and that the growth amount of area sewer decreases when three communities operate under a single strategy around a particular watershed. And the data, which is being finalized now, is being distributed, will be distributed to report to all the Cape communities, that documents and confirms what I think we have collectively been saying, which is that regionalization, apart from having other benefits, provides a basis upon which towns can minimize infrastructure and maximize savings. And so I think that realization that we have documented that case, and that's a significant accomplishment for the collaborative, frankly. Take it from these theoretical and subjective, it's not just us saying it, having, you know, documented case where we show that that's applicable. And the elements that went into that finding are replicable elsewhere. There's nothing unique about test case that makes its findings any less applicable anywhere else on the Cape.
Can I...
Yes.
I'd like to correct you. I'm sure it's just... Wasn't it Brewster?
Brewster.
Okay. And we should have that presentation shared with the other...
We will. It's being cleaned up and is going to be ready to go over.
No, it's very impressive, and it makes an impact on your thinking.
Now, the other key element and finding of the group was that we talk about regionalism. And we talk about it a lot. And sometimes we talk about regionalism as the end. And I think what the group recognized was that regionalism is a means to an end. The end objective here isn't to get people to regionalize because we think regionalization's good. The end objective of this initiative, the end objective of the county's priority, is the protection and restoration of water quality, both drinking water and esterine water quality. Regionalization as a means to get to that end in a way that we now know and can demonstrate to people is less expensive and less disruptive of the communities. But the end needs to be restated in people's minds more clearly. It's not as regionalization, that's the tool. The end objective is water quality improvement. And what this report really focuses on is Cape Cod as a unique compilation of very special and discreet places that people associate with, and because they associate with it, they value it. If you talk to somebody about getting up in the morning and going to regionalize, not a lot of energy there. If you talk to somebody about, "I'm going to get up in the morning and I'm going to protect LeCoy Bay," or "I'm going to go out in the rain and do water samples around Pleasant Bay," they'll go, "I care about Pleasant Bay. I value that resource. I understand it has meaning to me. It has intrinsic value to me." And that what we really need to do is to begin to reorient the collaborative and county policies around a place-based agenda that says it is our objective to, over some finite period of time, fix these places and come up with a list and put an idea, put a notion around those. And so I think the finding of the group, summary, is great on money, great on public education. We need to do more on regionalization, not because regionalization isn't important, but because regionalization is the way to get resources improved and improved quickly. The recommendations before you are that the collaborative, that the structure follow that set of objectives, that if we're going to say places on Cape Cod are important and places deserve our attention as a county, concentrated, consistent treatment from a policy perspective down to a financial assistance perspective, which we can help with, down through a regulatory and technical assistance perspective that the commission can provide, a consistent chain of thought has to be focused around improving specific places. And that the governing body of the collaborative ought to be charged specifically with the mission of protecting a set of places that you would designate based on the science that we have, combined with our understanding of the readiness of an opportunity to be taken advantage of. If there are four or five places, like you were upper Cape, you know, the discussion around the base, you've got Resource LeCoy Bay, you've got four towns that have joined together to start to have the right kind of conversation about what to do and utilize the opportunity that presents itself at the base. That's a pretty good case to look at and say, "You know what? That's going to be one of our priorities for the next three to five years." Versus another situation where you've got a regional resource, but neither of the towns around it have done enough to do their planning. Maybe that's not a place where you designate your priority right now. So the idea is to designate places as of significance because they're just so important as a place, or because we see an opportunity to actually move the ball forward and get some cleanup done with the right kind of concentration of effort. That we would articulate as a county on a annual basis, these are the places. And the governing board of the collaborative, rather than now being what it is, which is a 15 individually-appointed members of representing their communities, plus a couple of people representing the county on your behalf, that that governing board would be made up of people at your choice that would be focused and charged with the mission of protecting and enhancing those places. So the reason for the governing board to exist is around solving regional problems, not representing the interests of the individual community per se. The individual communities benefit from this initiative succeeding because the special places encompass those communities. But the place takes precedence over the individual corporate entities. We found a real difficulty asking people, as well-intentioned as they all are and dedicated because they all come to the meetings and they all participate, but if they're appointed by their selectmen to represent their town, matching the ability of those individuals with that mission, that's why I'm there, representing Town X, and asking them to set that mindset aside to advocate on behalf of Resource X that's different than their town encompasses, but is not always the same, is an unfair place to put those people. And they come, it's a mixed message. And that rather than ask those people to perform that task, which is really impossible for them to do, regardless of intention, it seemed to make sense to the group that the governing board, the management entity of the collaborative, be given one clear mission, which is the regionalization and protecting special places, be appointed by you folks based on their ability to represent that view, and take people out of this uncomfortable position of being asked to do two things that are different than what their appointing authority sent them to do. That said, there was also a general view that engagement of the individual communities continues to be an important thing because you have this place, but the towns live in that place, and the towns are going to be the ones that are going to be implementing solutions necessary to protect and enhance that place. And therefore, the group's recommendation is that the 15-member board now that is appointed by the municipalities get modified but be retained in some form. And that form is as a municipal advisory panel that provides advice to the governing board that has the regional perspective, that reflects the knowledge, input, and needs of the individual towns. And at the municipal advisory board, the door swings both ways. Municipal advisory board would advise this new governing board on where the town is, on a particular issue, what some of their concerns might be from a land use side, zoning side, a funding side, citing of various facilities, scope and nature of a collection system. They would bring that information to that governing board and share that information. So if we had a LeCoy Bay initiative, the four people representing Mashpee Sandwich Board and Vallet would have somebody to feed their information to, so you're not asking that individual to know everything that's going on and that's relevant to this initiative in the four towns. There'd be some body of, there'd be some people there that would provide that backup. The change would be that that town-based body would no longer be the governing entity. It would be an advisory board to the new governing board, and it would be appointed by the commissioners upon recommendations from the individual towns. So you would continue to go back to the community and say, "Here's our structure. Here's what we're trying to accomplish. Give us good people who know what's going on in town, who have the ability to bring your case forward, but as importantly, bring information back." That's why I say the door needs to swing both ways. We need people who can advocate on behalf of their town, but also bring back information that's relevant in shaping what the town's response to a regional initiative might be and what they learned from what's happening at county level. So that 15-member board would be your appointment with town input, the idea being they represent the towns, but they're representing the towns in a context that is different than the context we have right now. And that, in sum, is really the findings of the committee, that, you know, place-based management's important and it needs to start at the top, and how we talk about what our priorities are and flow all the way down through all the resources that the county has at its disposal. That we identify important areas and designate them as our county priorities, that we appoint a governing board that's charged with and reflects that regionalized, place-based view, and is charged with advancing regional initiatives in those places you so designate, and that that be supported by a municipal advisory panel of 15 people that you appoint that would provide the interface directly with the towns. It is not, in many levels, it is not a, by any means, sort of a scrapping of the collaborative. What it is, is really a refinement of the structure to meet the recognition that our needs are different than they were when this was originally done, that a town-based body has taken us very far, but isn't necessarily equipped to take us to the next increment. And what the next increment really is, and we've all seen it, is implementation. And we've seen how difficult implementation can get, and we've seen how fractious the discussion can be, how people with many different interests all align in some fashion with minimizing costs, slowing down projects, protecting the environment as they understand it, create and coming at these issues from very different perspectives can create a critical mass that can stop projects from moving forward. And that we really need an aggressive county push to make sure that people understand the risks and issues at hand, and that there are ways to do this that minimize and ways to do this that maximize expenses. And that the county view really is one that brings people to the table with the objective of solving the problem at the minimum cost with the minimum amount of infrastructure could be built. And we're not, we do not have the upper hand in that discussion at the moment.
Five years ago, when we started this process, the intent was to establish the collaborative and create something that we had no background or no information with regard to any historical precedent. I believe that at that time, it was a concern that we, that not recognizing what the, you know, what the town's opportunity for participation was, was something that was of great concern. I believe, and I think that the, you know, that the discussions at the committee level were compelling, that if we are concerned with results rather than efforts, that if we do not make a change that would help facilitate delivery of those results, we would continue to have a discussion about what efforts were being made, what interest individual towns have. So it would be, and I voted with the committee, you know, as far as the, as far as the final outcome, you know, I fully support, as a member of the committee, what, you know, what findings that, you know, that they came out of. And I would suggest at this point that all of us, you two, read the, you know, read the outcomes here, and perhaps we should come back and decide if we go forward. I believe there's another piece you haven't spoken to, and that is the need of mending the ordinance.
Right. There is...
I just wanted to ask, Pat, do you have any comments on this before we go any further? Okay.
From a process point of view, there's a couple steps that need to happen. One is that, you know, when you originally charged this group, raised the, your charge laid out, you know, desire to have, to be, for there to be opportunities for public view and comment to you on the findings. So what I would suggest is that you take this report and sort of consider this sort of an initial public disclosure of the findings of the group, not that it was done behind closed doors, and that, you know, we post it on the Cape Keeper site, and we invite people to provide comment back to you as a board over a time-certain period. I would suggest that collaborative board meeting next Wednesday, that the comment period encompass and go a few days past that to give the current collaborative the opportunity to digest this, I can present it to them on Wednesday.
On Wednesday.
And get some comment back to you. So what I would suggest is that, you know, we post it, we set up a comment period that perhaps runs through next Friday, which will give people the opportunity to provide written comment or come during your next session, you know, the open comment period at the beginning, perhaps, and then take it up for an acceptance, or hope acceptance, or modification of the report at your meeting the following Wednesday, so the 21st.
Okay. Bill, what do you want to add?
I just want to make sure that we've given adequate time for public response. And although I agree in substance with what you're saying, perhaps we need, I was going to suggest we take that to the end of the month.
You can do that. It's really questionable how quickly you want to move, it's like, it's fine.
Well, no, it's just the idea that the criticism that I've, you know, that I've received in the past is that we invite people to comment, and then they, you know, they, we don't hear anything, and then they say, "We never heard about it." So by providing an extra week, and I think we have the benefit of, you know, that we receive comment on it, they can find it on the Cape Keepers.
We'll post it on the Cape Keeper's site today.
Okay. And that, and indeed, I think that people need to, you know, see it and comment on it, and also understand that our concern is results, outcomes. You know, the means to the end is, you know, is there, but the end is the one that focuses on protecting the things that we're concerned about. You know, I've heard we say this over and over, you know, we're going to protect what we have, we're going to make wise choices for what we need, but the wise choices may be needed if we have to then negotiate over too large a spectrum and other get them.
Okay. Pat, did you... Well, so we want to take it up on October 28th.
Take it up on the 28th.
And close comment on the 21st.
The Friday, no, I would say, why don't you go to the Friday before, till the 23rd?
Okay. That sounds good.
No, so people have two meetings, come voice their wholehearted support of this initiative to you.
You'll have to provide your comments again on the 28th.
And then the back of the report includes a recommended set of revisions to the ordinance.
Okay.
And the character, the way I presented it was a new ordinance. If it's useful, I can give you a red line strikeout version of the county ordinance and what's incorporated here, if you wanted to see where the changes are.
And by the way, the public should know that when we do go for the ordinance part of it, that opens up a whole new opportunity, just part of the hearing process that is inherent in the assemblies deliberations. So there is, let's see.
A lot of opportunities, yes.
Yes.
Two bites at the apple, as they say.
Right.
And I would, just to say that the, at the vote by the committee to authorize you to submit this to you was seven in favor, one abstention. From the members I've heard from, since we've completed the final draft, there's only one who, at this point, was uncomfortable supporting the recommendation that's presented, or he has not closed the door on that.
And in fairness to that one member, I think that a lot of his concern was that he had missed the meeting where it had been discussed by the whole committee, and he felt uncomfortable in supporting something that he wasn't intimately familiar with.
I just want you to know that the committee has had the opportunity to review this over the last couple of days, and all the one are comfortable with it.
Really? Okay. And can I ask what the, other than what Bill just expressed, was the case with the...
I think that, I think that we, you know, we moved fairly quickly from analysis to a set of solutions.
That was the...
And, you know, the timing, you know, it was a tough meeting to have missed, I guess. And so you just hadn't had an opportunity to review it and, you know, had some concerns about the public process, you know, before submitting it to you folks. How widely should it have been distributed across the Cape to get input from the committee and from the collaborative? And I think there was a general feeling that the task you assigned to the committee was to do a review and not have that review of the collaborative, but not have that review be subject to review by the collaborative.
Okay.
And I just think there was just a difference in opinion about where that opportunity for input from the collaborative was most appropriately placed. And I think the majority of the committee viewed their obligation to you, to give you an unvarnished view of what the performance has been, and set of recommendations based on that, give the collaborative itself the opportunity to respond to it, and then you're in a position to marry those two views and move forward as you see fit. But we didn't want to, I think the majority of the committee didn't want its take colored by the entity that's reviewing, or the sort of feeling that they needed to stay somewhat unarmed, so that you got the benefit of their unbiased assessment, and then you can weigh the collaborative individually or collectively as an entity, its response to this, should there be one, however you choose to do that.
I have no doubt that the collaborative will give us their take on this, and as will members of the public. So once all of that is done, then we can take all of those things into consideration and figure it out from there. But I want to thank you, and I want to thank you for representing our interests there. And...
And we should thank the people who showed up.
Who did, who did show up. It was a very big group.
It was a really good group. It was a good group, you know, they dug in, they, you know, it was, it was an interesting process.
And they took it very seriously. I had talked to some of them, and they were really very serious about what their mission was, and they saw what it was about.
We all sat through committee meetings that are laborious.
Right.
And are sort of a necessary thing to say you did it. And I would say, this committee was interesting to sit and discuss these matters with, and there was, I mean, things changed a lot over the course of the discussions, I think there's some real value to it.
Remember their names, so we'll put them on the committee.
Yeah, that's right. Well, we have it here, so we'll keep them, they might be our standards.
So we should bring that to the assembly today, and then announce the, you know, the comment period there, it's on TV as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Yeah, we will.
Okay.
Um, the, um, there, we have five minutes. I, I would like to just be able to talk to Andy about this, Paul just left. I received an email from Sandy Bane about a meeting yesterday and it's concerning me about our efforts on.
Our wastewater.
And how are we going to approach this and the cost and the alternative septic systems as opposed to, we all know that, and I love Representative Patrick, Matt Patrick, he is a, you know, he wants the right thing done as we all do and he is on the alternative septic kick as, as far as being an alternative to sewerin and that this is a cheaper way to go and as effective way to go. And I'm not disputing that. I do, part of me is beginning to feel that maybe he's just trying to get a lot of attention on this because there's, if we could just do some funding on some of the tests, you know, to test some of these ideas out, you know, like somebody come forward, like you can have my house, you use my house as a, as a guinea pig and refurbish it and, and let's, you know, study the analysis for three years or what have you. But if it doesn't work, then you have to pay to get it all back to normal again. However, that said, there are these meetings that are happening across the Cape, not just you us, but across the Cape by individuals who are not associate, normally associated with the whole project. They're kind of coming in and added from their own point of view or point of interest. So, and, and they will bring George and they met with Congressman Della Hunt or Mark Forrest yesterday. I have a call into Mark, we haven't quite met. I'm, I'm just a little concerned about this and I wanted to, and I did talk to you for two seconds about it before this meeting.
What, what part did George Hoifelter have in this?
Well, this is, this is another, I mean, I, he's, he's doing a study at the base on alternative.
Yeah, there's a lot of moving, there's a lot of moving parts.
There's a lot of.
There's a lot of moving parts and what's, what's happening is a lot of things are getting sort of put in the same bag, shaken up and being used interchangeably.
Right.
And, you know, some of it has to do with questions about the performance of alternative technologies as add-ons to septic systems. And there are, there is a promising technology out there that is performing reasonably well in backyards that provides nitrogen reductions greater than what we've seen in other backyard based systems. There is a process by which the state reviews and permits and approves the use of these innovative technologies, first on a very limited basis, then on a somewhat broader basis and then ultimately on a general use basis. And that process, that technology is moving through that process. I think you asked what George's role is, George is obviously part of the testing process through the work at the base. Believe him to find that the results. And if we want it, and this process falls and get approved. If you've got the time and patience, they'll see that it can get its way through the process and it'll be generally use proof. There's a technology for taking nitrogen out of the groundwater. It's not associated with a system. It treats the legacy problem or is purported to treat the legacy problem. It's been tested in one location, Waco Bay, there are some results, it's somewhat less clear what they mean, it's somewhat less clear how viable a solution that technology is as a broad scale application across the Cape, it is somewhat less clear what the environmental implications of basically putting in a trench system around the wetlands, around water bodies, wide scale across the Cape, whether you can do that and the disruption that comes from having that. We don't let people, generally speaking, we don't let people muck around in the wetlands to build stuff. There's a question about whether regulatorily we'd let people dig a trench down in the groundwater and fill it up with carbon based products to absorb nitrogen and what that means to the environment, whether it reduces nitrogen effectively and if it does, what are the other implications from that? So there's a lot more questions. So there's that piece. Then there's alternative, what are classified as alternative sewer systems, which function in many respects the same way as a conventional system but are engineered differently. They have a treatment plant. They have pipes that are tied to people's homes. They have pumps suck the water to people's, from people's homes to that treatment plant. It's treated, it's discharged someplace, it goes back into the ground. Alternative sewer systems are treatment and collection systems. They are a fine thing. They are different. They may be less expensive, they may not be less expensive. They typically result in using smaller pipes to connect, not to people's pipe as it comes out of the house, but to the end of the septic tank. So rather than you got your septic tank, all solids sit, then you've got a leach field that gets rid of the water. These alternative sewer systems tie into the leach, take the place of the leach field. They leave the solids behind in your septic tank, in your backyard. You take the water, because it doesn't have any solids in it, there's less of it, it's less expensive to build a system to move less things, it's less expensive to treat the affluent that's only water because it's got less nasties in it and.
It's cheaper arguably.
To put in a two inch pipe rather than a six inch pipe, pump that wastewater to the treatment plant, treat it, put it back in the ground. So you save a little bit of money perhaps on the engineering and construction of the facility, or the pipes. You probably save some money on the construction of the wastewater treatment facility itself because you're treating a more dilute, less potent, more liquefied waste than what comes out of the pipe if it's just leaving your house. It also leaves you with these tanks in everybody's backyard that eventually you're going to fill up. And so you need the infrastructure to go pump the tanks out and then you got all this really potent stuff because all the water's gone.
Right.
Left behind, then you got to take somewhere and treat. So you need facilities to do that. That costs money. How much an apples to apples solution comparison is, I don't know.
Well, you know.
And so it's.
Could you please just.
So you've got, so you've got this combination out there and you've got people saying, you know, alternative systems will save you money.
Right.
And they might. And they might be a really good solution in some portions of some towns. They might be a really good solution in the entirety of some towns.
Right.
But there's a level of analysis of what you got to build and what support structure you need to build in order to take care of the care and feeding of that before you can compare a conventional sewer system that takes everything out of somebody's house, pipes it over to a place and treats it and discharges it. And so people are taking these four things, conventional systems, alternative systems, IA backyard systems and this barrier technology. And they're saying, these IA systems and this barrier and this alternative thing, they got to be cheaper than big sewers.
Right.
And so let's look at them and let's call a timeout and not make anybody do anything until we know. And, you know, I think that there's some confusion about what it is we're talking about and I think there's some confusion and strategic direction that some people are taking to say, let's stop. Because if we stop, it's not going to cost us very much. And I think the mistake and the piece that gets lost in this is there's no free cheap alternative to solving this problem. There are different methods that have different upfront costs, that have different operational maintenance costs and have different implications on development characteristics in a different community. But there is no system that has none of those. There's no system that doesn't cost any meaningful money, there's no system that doesn't have implications on operational maintenance and there's no system out there that doesn't change your growth patterns. So what people need to get off of, and we're, I think these meetings provide some hazard, is propagating this idea, is if we just stop and wait long enough, a silver bullet solution's going to emerge that's cheap and easy and non-disruptive and if we just wait long enough, it's going to be around the corner. That's misleading.
It is misleading and it's, it's halting the progress and it's damaging the progress that's been made. Pat, you want to say something?
Well, I just wanted to say that, you know, Andy really states it very well because the, the people who are out there promulgating the alternatives or the barriers or whatever they are, are, what their purpose is saying is, this is really going to cost less, so stop your planning on, on sewer systems and devote all your time and energies on these because these are the way of the future. But on the other hand, there are certain areas of our, of the Cape that lend itself better to sewerin than to the alternatives. And actually, they all have a benefit.
Absolutely.
The idea is you have to look at those areas where sewerin is the best possible solution because of the, of its outcomes as opposed to the alternatives, which are overall very expensive because of their maintenance. And I think what's, and that's what's happening is there's this group of people that are saying, stop what you're doing, listen to us and you won't have to sewer anything and we have to not.
Or spend any money.
Then don't spend any money in the meantime and if you stop it and stop your planning, the, the, the register is ringing, you know, and the costs are going up all while these discussions are going on.
I mean, the irony of this discussion, and it really speaks to what this report talks about, is that we, you, me, the county, are being cast as the advocates for mindless, willy-nilly sewerin.
Right.
When really what our, what our position has been throughout is only build the minimal amount that you need in order to achieve the water quality goal. And people, we've allowed this discussion to turn things on its ear a little bit where people who are, some for good reasons, some for not so good reasons, arguing why we shouldn't be doing this, are now all of a sudden the defenders of the taxpayer, the defenders of the environment and those that are seeking to minimize construction. I think as a county, we need to provide enough, find a way to provide the right kind of information so that people understand fact from fiction and understand that proceeding with your planning gives you the greatest prospect to minimize your infrastructure construction at the lowest possible cost, stopping covenants.
And one other thing you find out, just, if you talk to your boards of health in the different towns, you'll find out that there are people in your communities who have already applied to the board of health for permits to put in these alternative systems. I asked that question the other day and I was really astounded at the number of homeowners who have actually installed some of these alternatives on their own, which are perfectly permissible with the proper permits.
But the problem is, most of the permit, most of the IA systems that are out there in general circulation are inadequate, they're expensive and they're inadequate to meet the water quality needs. So people are, because people who sell these things, this is a business.
That's right, and that's the point.
This is a business.
The people who are starting this have an interest not.
Some do.
Some do.
Some do. And some people, some people who are, you know, very aggressively pushing the alternative agenda, design, construct, sell and install these systems. And they have a very strong motivation to provide the greatest regulatory flexibility, the greatest focus on implementation of these systems as possible. And do not necessarily have an obligation as individual business people of stepping back and looking at the best solution for an individual community or the best solution for a cluster of individuals within a community. And, you know, that is a bit of the tail wagging the dog. And, you know, I think that there is a, as there always is, a buyer beware component of this, that I think the county can very importantly take a role in.
Bill? Well, past several years, George Hoifelter has taken the position of providing a mechanism to testing any of these alternative systems. And one of the things that has struck me is that all the systems that have been tested have significant flaws and I don't believe any of them really addressed the nitrogen removal issue. The other, the other piece which I think is also important is that when you are making an investment, you always have three elements. It's what it costs to put it in the ground, what it costs to operate it, what it costs to remove it. And all of these are not taken into consideration in any of the, in any of the conversations that I've heard. I'm very concerned that many of the good things, especially in the, in the town of Chatham, which have gone forward and which their town meeting has approved, are suddenly running up against what I would call concerned citizens who are, who are worried about.
Impact.
On others, when it's fairly transparent that they're concerned about what's coming out of their, I'd say their own pocket and if enough time goes by, they don't longer own the property and they don't have to, you know, don't have to bear the expense of it. It is something that we need to do. We need to have an intelligent process. In the beginning of all of this wastewater collaborative planning effort, it was clear that the case that we made to the towns was that we are not putting in a single sewer that would take care of all of Cape Cod or a, or a large regional sewerage treatment facility. We would look at each area as to what would be appropriate. The consistency of that and the delivery of that and the things that I think this report, you know, addresses, that whatever, you know, whatever outcome comes from, you know, the support that we get from the assembly should be that we are looking for results that serve the best interest of this, you know, of the county. And George Hoifelter feels in the best position to advise on the experience that he's had and the testing facility that we've had out there for several years and also to advise the public as to his, let's say, his outcome. And I believe in every case, he's talked about the financial, the scientific and the, and individual commitment that has to be made to support it.
I think George has been a very good, honest broker of information.
Right.
I think what's happening is that people are selectively taking that piece of the answer that supports the outcome they want to achieve and they're running with it.
And they're running with it as a blanket solution.
Right.
And I think that if George was here and he has said this in my office, that it is one component of the solution and we all agree on that. Sewering all of wealth league is impossible and not going to happen.
Necessarily.
It's a dumb thing to do. Where I live, I will be, I will benefit from a alternative septic, but down in the downtown area, they're going to benefit from some sort of sewerin.
And it may be an alternative system that has them, you know, doing a, you know, a small system.
Small system.
That's, you know, right in the middle of downtown, consistent with the character. I am indifferent.
And as are.
Utterly and totally indifferent.
The most economical.
To a community's choice of a combination of technologies and system sizes and characteristics of those systems, as long as the science shows that the implemented system gets you the nitrogen reduction you want. And I think we should all be.
Right.
Indifferent to that. And I think the, you know, just like somebody saying, a central system is the wrong answer for everybody. Going to the Polaroid screen saying, alternative systems are the only answer.
Right.
Is equally inappropriate.
Exactly.
There are reasons why some communities, you know, Chatham stands out as an example. They chose a path to sewer the whole community over a phase period of time for a combination of reasons, one of which being that solved the water quality problem and there were other community elements that made sense for that solution. My expectation is that no other town on Cape Cod has a situation that will result in that community choosing to sewer regardless of technology, 100% of their community. And as a result, by definition, they will continue to have onsite systems in people's backyards with some form of collection and treatment. And most serious plans and most serious discussions about wastewater planning have to incorporate the full range of solutions. And then sit down with real numbers done by real engineers who are not selling this stuff, compare cost effectiveness of doing this piece this way, that piece that way, this piece that way. And the thing of value that we have to add as a county to this discussion is we can tell people, forget vendor claims, we can show you for hard engineering how talking to your neighboring community brings the cost down.
Exactly.
Regardless of the method. And so that's the important message that we have to carry forward.
I, I feel that this is a moment in time for all of us in that if we don't, if we don't act swiftly and with a sense of urgency, which is why the collaborative was, was created in the first place, we will not have a legacy to leave to our, our children. in the first place, we will not have a legacy to leave to our, our children and grandchildren and great grandchildren. We will not have the Cape. All you have to do, we, and I, and I think our role in the county is to take a, a more aggressive way of communicating to do the individual, not just the boards of selectmen and those who are listening. I was at a meeting on Saturday in Brewster. Now Brewster is going through all of their rezoning, and the gentleman that is heading that from the Conservation Commission there, it came and spoke before people, and they were talking all about the groundwater and about protecting the water and the measures that they're taking in their DC PC. And, and I, I spoke to that as well, among other issues, about what the county was doing. And, and I looked at this as a very enlightened, in touch group, and there were members that are saying, how come we don't know anything about this?
Big words to the Lord is no excuse.
I think we need to move on. Yes, we do have to move on, but I did want to bring that to the attention of my fellow commissioners, and that I do think that we need to, as a county, speak as one.
And I think personally, there's nothing that I think is more important than, let's say, than moving this process forward. And I have a certain amount of impatience with knowing that we can move, we can move more quickly and yet not seeing, you know, and I want to make sure that we, that we move to a place where we can't be, can't, it can't be said of us that we are stalling or holding back because we want to make sure that, you know, that everybody gets every answer that they want. I think this is a time where we know what we have to do, we just have to do it.
Right.
That's why it's called wastewater planning, you know, it's not, this is the way it's going to be.
Andy, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job.
Yes, very good.
You'll be in touch.
Well done.